You can start.
All right, let's pull this to order. Turn the thing on. Yeah, okay. Can you do the call please?
Mr. Campbell.
Yeah.
Mr. Robinson.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown. Mr. Hardwick.
Yeah.
Mr. Holdroyd.
Yeah.
Mr. Pierce though.
There.
Ms. Williams.
Yeah.
Chairman Wright.
Present. Okay, uh, review and adoption of meeting, uh, agenda. So, uh, we've got two changes that have been requested. Discussion on EDA membership, and you've got a couple of questions you'd like to ask. Is there anything else? Uh, Kenny, well, he's already on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, there are two questions I don't.
Charlie's question.
Yeah, yeah.
Make the motion to.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion passes, okay? We've got approval of minutes, October twenty, uh, October twelve minutes.
Make a motion for ten minutes.
Second, is there a second? Need a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Uh, yeah.
All opposed? All right, minutes are adopted. Let's see, Treasury report, um, you're gonna, you're gonna speak to us about that?
So I wanted to talk to you guys, just let you guys know where we're at with, uh, bank accounts and what it takes for the EDA to have its own bank account. We have located the official name as well as tax ID number. So at this point, it's just, uh, it's gonna be up to the Treasurer of the EDA to reach out to a bank, pick a bank, and set up an account. Um, we were given advice by our attorney about how to set up. So right now, there is a grant back performance agreement going on with Nestle, the EDA is partner in. Um, that it could be better if it were two separate accounts, one specifically for that Nestle grant back where it sits empty most of the year until the county puts in money for the grant back when the EDA moves it, and then a separate account, it would be for the operations of the EDA. Um, so choose your bank. We've got the information for you to open the accounts, you open your accounts. Um, it will be up to the ADA to keep its books. Um, but the audit of those books is gonna be done with the rest of the county audits. So there will need to be monthly discussion or monthly report from the EDA to county finance, making sure everyone's on the same.
There will be.
There will need to be.
Need to be, right.
To make sure that our books are in line with your books, and that's when we have an audit which includes the EDA bank accounts, that's.
You believe it up to me, solely me to choose that bank?
Well, it's up to the EDA, but you're the Treasurer, so you have the, you have the say.
Well, anybody got, should we discuss it now? Anybody got a preference on what bank to use?
Only have one or two, you have two accounts. If you have both accounts to the same bank, could it be confused in what's going on at the bank level?
It shouldn't be.
I just, I had problems with that before, being that's why I'm asking the question.
What, what bank are we currently using?
The county has multiple banks, but its general fund is mostly in the, uh, premise. It used to be C N F, or we used to use C N F as our primary.
I was leaning towards them.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, you probably.
No problem.
Okay. I asked if there was any, any perks for going with the same bank as the county, and there wouldn't be as far as interest and things like that, free to choose.
First, do we, do we need to have a motion or is there? Or, or good?
Okay.
Um, is there any other discussion, questions?
Uh, yeah, since I'm Treasurer, I'm gonna need to come up here and get with you and.
Yeah, I would say come up, get with me, get with Natasha and Finance, and we'll.
And.
Work out a process.
Okay. All right. Okay.
All right.
Let's see, Karina has agreed to come talk to us about tax, uh, the county tax structure, opportunities. Um, and I just wanna take a minute to thank you. I know that you're in crunch season and probably getting more phone calls than you should, and.
No, I just knew.
You're, um, we're, we're, we're lucky to have you, and thank you.
You're very welcome, you're very welcome. All right, um, good evening. I, this speech is three and a half pages, and I have ten points, it's ten slides on my PowerPoint, which Chris has, and she can just read it to you all if you have any questions. And, um, to be brief, I'm not gonna say the code numbers, but they're in my speech, I'm just gonna say code. And then you'll know it's Virginia code, and there's specific numbers, but it's all in my speech that I gave Chris, so you could look it up if you need to. So good evening, as you know, Mr. Rose invited me to speak tonight. He requested I speak about the business license tax, the transit occupancy tax, and the cigarette tax. So I present information about these taxes, but I would like you to consider these taxes as a means of revenue diversification. First, I will show you some information about the county revenues. Now, slides two and three, they're half and half because they didn't fit on one. Um, so that's the upper half, and number three is the bottom half that has the totals. Now, on slide number four, I took the taxes assessed by my office and put them in slide number four. So real estate taxes account for almost half of the county revenues, and I think this is too many eggs in one basket. The county adopted a food and beverage ordinance in two thousand nine, and now brings in four hundred thousand dollars a year. Slide number five is a copy from the totals of the two thousand twenty-two land book, and all our land books are on the website for the last three years. So it shows tax levies of eleven point six million. So I put this information in slide number six. And so that shows that not only is the county heavily dependent on real estate taxes, but the county is also overly dependent on residential real estate taxes. So this is the reason the county needs to explore, um, other revenue options. The equation at the bottom of the slide shows that one penny on the real estate tax rate brings in a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in revenue. But this is a low approximation because I didn't include the town of West Point taxes and, um, real estate taxes from the public service corporations. So I tend to view things based on this number. By adopting the food and beverage tax ordinance, the county has been able to reduce the real estate tax rate by three cents. A paid firefighter would cost about one half cent on the real estate tax rate. So I always think of things in that number, how much it costs, you know, on the real estate rate. So, um, the professional, business professional occupation, occupational license tax called B-Pole is authorized by the Code of Virginia. It's a local option tax on the privilege of doing business within a locality. The General Assembly amended the statute in nineteen sixty-four to allow more localities to adopt B-Pole. It was amended again in nineteen seventy-eight and imposed ceilings on the tax rates localities could charge. And then in nineteen ninety-six, there was a major significant amendments to, to the, um, this part of the code to help ensure a more uniform administration of B-Pole. Now, Code of Virginia, fifty-eight point one, thirty-seven oh three point one establishes a uniform ordinance provisions, which is basically what King William County adopted in two thousand three. So Mr. Mead said, why are so many things exempt from the tax? So slide number seven shows the most common businesses exempt from, um, B-Pole as required by state code. So the county has no option, they have to exempt these from, um, getting a business license tax. So, you know, you have public service corporations like Verizon, Dominion Power, and the common carriers like Amtrak, Bay Transit. They don't need a business license. Farmers don't need a business license. Publishing companies like the County Courier doesn't need a business license. Manufacturers, they don't have a business license, they pay them in T-tax. Businesses engaged in severing minerals from the earth, they don't need a business license. Hoistsellers without a definite place in business or locality. Um, the business of renting property other than hotels. That means if someone rents their house out for a year, or rents apartment buildings for, you know, oh, you know, over a month, anything over thirty days, that wouldn't require a business license. Insurance company, they pay all their taxes regulated in state banks, they pay the bank franchise tax. Accredited religious practitioners, churches, no church needs a business license, and charitable nonprofit organizations like the King William Historic Museum. I, slide number eight is the business license application. It's one page, so it's not overly burdensome. And slide nine shows the county rate compared to the state met tax maximum rate that's allowed to charge for each category. So how can B-Pole revenue be increased? So the obvious answer is by attracting more businesses to the county. So how could the county do that? What they could change, so currently, the county charges a minimum of thirty dollars fee for businesses with grocery receipts of less than fifty thousand dollars a year. So they would just pay thirty thousand. If you have sixty thousand dollars in grocery receipts, you're charged the tax based on the rate of your business. So here in Michael County, they exempt four hundred thousand dollars in grocery receipts before they impose the tax. Uh, so by, and so the county is only lower than the state, um, maximum for professional services. So by adjusting the grocery receipts exemption or lowering the business tax rate for professionals, um, any of the taxes that might encourage businesses to locate to the county. So the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service publishes the annual tax rates of all the taxes imposed by all the localities in Virginia. So the easy reference that you can compare what King William does compared to King Queen, compared to Hanover, compared to Middlesex, or New Kent. So when you're, you know, deciding on tax rate and what things to do, you should look at what your neighbors are doing. All right, so the B-Pole revenue could also be increased by compliance enforcement aimed at ensuring all businesses have a license and report receipts correctly. Okay? So I have been an advocate for the county to adopt the transit occupancy tax. So recent state, um, court decision in May of two thousand twenty-one, um, and amendment to the code allow localities to adopt an ornament, ordinance, and just start collecting money. Um, the Commission of Revenue Association has a model ordinance in form available that could be used immediately. I had, this would not be a significant revenue source today, but in ten years, when growth in Mechanicsville reaches Central Garage, you know, we might have a hotel, and it could be a significant source of revenue. So, you know, if you look at in thirteen years, the revenue generated by meals tax, you know, this could become a good revenue source for the county in a way to diversify your revenue. So this three court decision in May of two thousand twenty-one, um, concerned, um, them, Norton versus the Board of Supervisors. And Fairfax was requiring, um, the renters of dwellings to pay the occupancy tax. And so they sued and say, well, the dwelling is not a hotel, motel, boarding house, travel campground, or other facility offering guest rooms for rent less than thirty days. But it says in the ordinance, it says guest rooms rented out for continuous occupancy for fewer than thirty days. So the owners argued that their properties, their dwellings, were not, um, you know, included in that part of the code. And Virginia, being a Dillon's rural state, said, well, they can't do it, Dillon's rural doesn't say they can do it. So, um, however, the court said that those distinctions were irrelevant because the section describes the manner in which the property is used. So anybody who rents a room in their house is required to collect the occupancy tax. And then in September first, two thousand twenty-one, the code, this section of the code was amended to require the occupancy be taxed, be charged on the total room charge, even if they added dry cleaning or meal service to their room or rented a movie, the whole charge for that rental would be subject to the meals tax. And then starting, um, started October first, two thousand twenty-two, the code required accommodation intermediary, intermediaries to collect the, um, transit occupancy tax. That means Airbnb, vacation rental by owners, Expedia, they all have to collect the occupancy tax and remit it to the locality. So if the county was to adopt an ordinance, they could just collect money from Airbnb and Expedia and all those people. Because you know there's people renting rooms under their houses, there's some vetting practices in the county, and they would have to pay. But if there's no ordinance, they don't have to collect it. Um, the transit occupancy tax can be up to, um, I think it was changed, and the counties can do as much as cities, but the first two percent of the occupancy tax goes to the county's general fund. Amounts between two and five percent of the tax would go, has to be devoted to local tourism and, um, travel. So, you know, you'd have to do that if you adopted, not all the money would be general fund, okay? Then in July two thousand twenty-one, effective July two thousand twenty-one, the General Assembly amended the code again, which allowed localities to become members of the regional cigarette tax board and have its local cigarette tax administered by the board. This is another instance where the Board of Supervisor can adopt the ordinance and just start collecting the money. Slide ten, this is the last one, shows the revenue collected by members of the localities of the Chesapeake Bay Region Cigarette Tax Board. Although all localities adopted a cigarette tax rate of forty cents except Akamak, which is ten cents. That, this is another means available to King William to diversify its tax bills. If King William passed an ordinance based on what Middlesex called, that King William could lower the real estate tax rate by two cents or lower the business tax rate by a certain amount, if they have other revenue sources making up. Um, so those, what I, are the three taxes, um, Mr. Rose asked me to speak on, but also I know that the EDA is considering hiring employees. So I just wanted to let you know, like nineteen years ago, when my husband was the town manager at West Point, they had an economic development consultant, and my husband was the PIM to assemble properties and prepare sites for development. So if someone wanted to start a business, they could say, well, here's a property, or here's something that you could use. Then he was the Economic Development Director of Essex, and he submitted a lot of grants on behalf of Essex. And Essex was awarded a one million dollar grant to develop a marina. So now he's working for Middlesex County and his focus is on tourism because they have a lot of campgrounds and marinas. Um, and so he said he would, you know, if you wanted to, he would come to the EDA and speak to you and address any questions that you had. Because if you hire someone, you should have the scope of their work defined, what you want them to work on. You want them to apply for grants for, you want them to come across, you want them to focus on tourism. You don't wanna hire someone and not know what you're hiring them to do. So that was just my two cents on that.
What, any questions? And I, I know I have one.
Okay.
So, so like, uh, if, if we wanted to have discussion about recommending to those supervisors that we adopt some of the taxes you discussed. How, do, do you have, uh, uh, templates that we can use, or are there?
For, for the ordinance? I mean, like, if you wanted to adopt the transit occupancy, I could give you the model ordinance and the tax form. Um, Airbnb is fighting identifying everyone who pays the mail tax. So Airbnb is remitting the taxes to the localities, but they're just giving us some and not saying who that's collected by. And part of the discussions with the state and the Commission of Revenue Association and these intermediary areas is developing a model ordinance to make it easy on these intermediary, intermediates and over the hundred localities in Virginia and having a uniform form. So I could provide that to you, of course. And then, um, with the cigarette tax, you know, you could look what Middlesex did, or, you know, Marne Foss, or Van of Warsaw, you know, what their ordinance is. You don't necessarily have to do forty cents, but, you know, if Middlesex could put that much money and three sixty goes right through Central Garage, I don't know if you collect more or less.
It's supposed to be free.
Yeah.
This was brought up at the Board of Supervisors, several months ago, and you know what happened to it?
Yeah, I, I know. I mean, but, you know, when you look at it in reference to how much they rely on real estate taxes and our business license, you know, how can you, you know, if you could adjust those rates to attract more businesses and you're able to make up the difference somewhere else, it, you know, it's all, you know, tools in the toolbox that could be used.
How do they, I didn't look, did I say?
No, they voted it down twice already. I mean, but now you have these numbers. And it was more than a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and they only adopted. Yeah, yeah, they're saying, yeah. And it's just, you know, and you don't have to do anything, it's not, you know, just collect the money.
Good, they want to bring it up again.
I mean, I mean, maybe not now, but, you know, next year, there's an election. It's, it should be something they can center. I mean, can, the county relies so much on real estate taxes, how can we help our residents here?
Question mark, the tax. But how much, what impact? How much will fill that this year, and how much will be actually collected back every year? I know it's a percentage that was lost.
Oh, yeah, you know, I do have something. Um, well, actually, th- this isn't helpful because it has all of it and not King William. But Finance has, even, so mine shows eleven point six million bill just for the county, that doesn't include West Point. They have some kind of ratio that they know, you know, they have the figures that I build from the books, and they know how much will be collected. So, um, I mean, real estate is a little bit higher than personal property, you know, they have some ratio. They know what I bill and how much they can expect to collect, because there's a certain amount of the basements and adjustments.
Question. Yeah, yeah. Oh, on, but the real estate has been sold from back from Newport News, it's back in the county.
Yeah.
How much total money will it be coming out of here now?
Well, I think they own like about forty parcels, and half of them have been sold, and as soon as they've been sold, they get a tax bill. And so, you know, quite a, you know, four people complained because they bought back property that Newport News annexed from them. And they're like, this is a lot more than the property is worth, I didn't pay this much what, what it was. And I said, um, you'll have to discuss that at the reassessment. Of course, Newport News didn't contest the assessments because they knew they weren't gonna pay the tax on the values. Um, some of them are gonna submit, you know, submit land use applications and put the properties in land use. But it's money that's gonna be collected, you know, ta, you know, tax revenue that's gonna be received that wasn't before. So.
Okay, so I, I was asked to keep things on track, right?
Yeah.
So it just took ten seconds. The, so between our B-Pole, so we don't have inventory tax here. A couple of years ago, I got the winner of system really good. It, it shocked me while we own a car dealership in this county, or at least has five acres, and moving the cars at Hanover.
Yeah.
Or somewhere. Because I'd like, you're in Michael's and Hanover's, these car dealerships get hammered with inventory tax.
Yeah.
So we don't have inventory, we just have B-Pole, which is broke sale.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that that's, so, thank you very much.
All right. And, and, and Chris has everything with the code sections written in the PowerPoint, if you wanna look the numbers closer. And of course, you can always call me, and I'm in my office a lot, so.
Got it, thank, thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome, thank you very much.
Thank you for your hard work. Okay, um, discussion on hiring. So, first. It's just a decision.
Thank you. I was, uh, looking to make a motion tonight for us to pursue having a paid, uh, full-time EDA, uh, person. I had the opportunity, uh, to talk with Ashlyn, who is recently, who has someone paid on staff. Um, and they just had a new person take the role. Um, passed out was actually the job description, I thought was really good when I saw it a few years ago, that Ashlyn, uh, put forward. Um, I think that we could use a lot of it. As far as the pay scale goes, we would have to work in King, King William's A means. Um, but I think that, uh, by talking with this individual, you know, that she had shared, I, I think it really moved the needle, you know, to increase, uh, current businesses here, bring in new businesses, and just be a great, uh, asset. Um, as far as timeline goes, uh, December fourth, i- if we were to agree to this, to put it forward to the Board of Supervisors, by the next meeting, I could pull together all the information needed, the, like, what this person is gonna cost us, um, and the different tools that they're gonna need to be successful with those costs. And then by the December nineteenth, Board of Supervisors, we can then pass it off to them for their approval. Uh, talking with Steve, um, I believe that this may not be able, if, if we can pass it, it may not be toward July of next year.
Right, since we haven't, don't have anything in the budget this year, unless you would somehow say it's an emergency and take it out of some unassigned fund, which isn't gonna happen, then it's gonna be in an FY twenty-four.
Okay.
Budget proposal.
Thank you. And, um, so the things that, you know, we still need to identify would be, you know, what this person will get paid, um, tools that they would need in a county vehicle, we provide a vehicle or expense mileage, um, expense account, where this person's gonna be office staff, um, and then reporting, you know, what benchmarks are we gonna set forward, uh, expectations for this individual? And, and my main goal is not to add it, not, not my goal, but the thought is, this person will create the revenue paper itself. This is us having to, it seems like our salesman.
Yeah, so let's see if we can flush out a motion here. So if I heard you correctly, you're talking about, um, a reporting structure, where this person offices, the timing for this, for the schedule for hiring, a job description, uh, uh, putting together a budget for tw- uh, this will be, uh, uh, twenty-four, what we pay, whether they have a vehicle, expense account, we wanna work through those details and, uh, prior to the next meeting. So, 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 and, and, and then, uh, at the next meeting, we have a motion that we would then forward to the Board, go through?
Yeah, we would have a motion, uh, to put forward so that the Board of Supervisors on nineteenth December could then have it approved. The last question is that. Okay, so, so the, the motion tonight is basically, are we in agreeance that we wanna have a paid EDA person or have need further to get a full budget? But then, uh, give it to the Board of Supervisors, present it.
Well, two step, but it's more than that. But we, uh, the Nineties, when I have last, that I saw, and then at the next meeting, we will have more back, previous to.
Yeah.
The fourth question, I have to think, let's see, who sets the salary?
Well. As long as, as long as the money is coming from the board, then it would be your request to the board for whatever you believe their salary is.
I would want, so you'd have more information about that.
And that was one big unknowns.
I didn't know who said the salary was the difference, so that's why.
And from county administration side, our thinking in this is that this, if this is what the EDA would like, that this person would be a county employee, kind of a name only, so that they could get county benefits, and the EDA doesn't have to deal with that side of things. But this person would really report to the, to the EDA, this is an EDA staff person.
Thank you for bringing up, in like, in meetings like this, as does Ashlyn talking to them, that said individual would be sitting next to Mr. Hudson, Mr. Ashcroft, or up here, and they would be reporting to us on their activities, and we'd be working the team.
I, I have a thought, just like connecting all the, all the dots here. Would, would it be helpful, since, since, since we have, you know, I mean, uh, right before, uh, we actually put together the budget, would it be helpful to have Karina's husband come talk to us in December as opposed to voting on it? And maybe that would help flush things out, or you have some other input?
And I also have a question, when would this need to be submitted to the board so they could plan it for their budget?
Well, that, it's, the sooner the better for budget planning. Um, county staff is getting their budgets in, their first draft of budgets are by the end of this month. But that's not some drop dead date, but no. Nothing can be taken in afterwards. It's, and in fact, it's more of a, you could probably take your time on really fleshing it out, but if you get some idea of what just the main budget is going to be, plus or minus, they get that request in as soon as possible, just to have a number, a placeholder in the budget. Plus or minus, they get that request in as soon as possible, just to have a number placeholder in the budget.
Are we thinking a full-time employee or a part-time? I mean, in terms of effort and the quality of person you're going to get, a full-time is ideal, right? Um, but just thinking in terms of benefits, that adds what thirty, forty percent to the, to the salary? So that might be something that the board of supervisors brought up. So. I don't know if we want to talk about that now or if we want to, if you want to explore both of those options. But that might be something we need to think about and isn't for the state. It, I know for the state, it's a twenty-nine hour cutoff for part-timers, so they're not qualified.
It's, it's an average of twenty-nine. It's a certain number of hours for the full year combined, which is. Twenty-nine hours a week, but you can manipulate that sum if you wanted to. We work one week and don't work the next or something like that.
So I've asked, asked Mr. Astrid. That same question, or I, I even thought, you know, two years ago, when you brought forward. You know, would it be a split planning zoning canons and, and the advice from the administrator was not hundred percent E D A. I mean, we're obviously a group here, but that was his first thought.
Mr. Chair. Actually, I've had this discussion with, with planning members, board supervisors, Steve, mustache crap, whatever. Uh, if it's a sixty-five thousand dollar a year salary with the benefits and everything, the car, it's a hundred thousand dollar expense to account. So when that number come out to the three board supervisor members, they, they said, well, you know, with the, the. The county wants to hire other employees right there. They want to hire them. So I kind of got shot down a little bit, but it number first to try again. But when you throw that figure out that with benefits and stuff like Sarah was meant to do and Kenny. And they crown upon it. And so really got to think it through and, and take it down.
You gotta think it through, take your time and, but also keep in mind. It's good to get it put in the door. Uh, it's, even if it doesn't happen full way this coming year, that's. Then it becomes a bigger priority the next year for the board.
Mr. Chairman, the only other period where, sorry, I'm late. Uh, if we're going to be doing some work on the expense side, I think the Kenny's point about this person should ideally, in a real world, pay for themselves. Given the figures that were just presented by Ms. Funkhausen. I would think that we could reasonably put together a pro forma to suggest this is the anticipated success and what that would translate to from a revenue perspective. To offset the expense. So that, and from, from that perspective, we would have real metrics to monitor in terms of. You know, what kind of expansion do we need to see in order to justify the expense before we actually start to see some ROI? Um, and that, I think, would probably be a helpful endeavor and a proposal that we would present to the public in addition to the board. On, to ship, I think that. I'm not sure that I love the concept of that person being our employee. I think that we would want to have input. I think that we would want that person to staff us. Um, but I'm just trying to put myself in the board supervisors' position or the county's position. And, and, and I just. I'm not sure. I think some ca- cost benefit analysis, some conversation should be have about what are the relative. Benefits, drawbacks of different supervised, supervisory structures. And so to go back to the town of Ashland and better understand, even if this person in Ashland is staffing the E D A meetings. Like what is that formal relationship look like, uh, between the E D A and the person and, and why? What are the trade-offs to the person being sort of supervised by the E D A versus the planning department or direct to the county administrator or, or whomever? Um, just to make sure that we are in a hundred percent alignment, I think is what we need to make sure we're in. Not that we shouldn't have input or say, um, but, but we're ultimately not the decision makers. Um, and, you know, being beholden to the public is, is something that, that we should obviously consider.
All right, so, so how do we turn this into action items? So I guess anyone did that? Yeah, it would be that between now and December fourteenth, to build a, a budget for expense of what this individual would cost us. Uh, working with Mr. Hudgens, get some numbers. And then, so I would present that on December fourteen. And then, w- we can pass it on to board supervisors and they can put their input, whether, yes, it's too much or. Um, I, I guess, let's just maybe get to December fourteenth at this point. And that would be a, a motion to pursue it and get the additional data. You've, you've got, you had some good comments. Would you like some help from somebody? Would anyone like to join in the act finding mission?
I'm happy to help as long as it doesn't flout any rules. We can schedule our public meetings at the convenience of the clerk.
And y'all can have, you know, just kind of conversations on.
All right, so there's a motion on the table to, uh, to have, um, these two gentlemen. Put together a motion for us that we can, we can then advance or not advance at the next meeting. Uh, and, and, uh, the motion is to, to look at. Hiring an E D A employee, part, full-time, part-time, whatever it may be. I guess I need a motion. Uh, yes, all of that, right? So, uh, reporting, office, timing, job description, budget for, uh, twenty-four. What the pay is, vehicle, expense accounts, all of it. That's, that was the list that I had.
Thank you.
Motion, we have a second, all a favor?
Who made the first? You had the first motion?
I guess I heard cats, isn't it?
ECA, uh, E D A website has a lot of applications. And the fellow name, I think it's done with Boston is a good contact. You see what he's bringing to handle and is a very nice man.
Is he, is he the head or is he like?
He's the head, he's the whole director of the, he, uh, fan of, and. Mr. Whitaker is on the planning commission for Hanover County. He'll tell you that he's bought Hanover County millions of dollars in the last two years. Look at that wagon, it's just all about that.
The way we might be able to help you is we can send you individually comments or thoughts we have, right, and, and. Yeah, okay, all right, so we've got that resolved. Let's see, you wanted to talk about E D A membership, Steve.
Indeed. So with the recent departure of Tiffany Barber, uh, she became a county employee and it's E D A bylaws that a county employee cannot be on the E D A. Um, that leaves you with eight survey members currently, one open seat. Um, there's been a little bit of talk about whether or not it would be more efficient to drop the E D A membership down to. Seven members, um, and, um. Really, would this be a good time to start that process, not by kicking anybody off or by just. Not reappointing someone in the next go around? Um, and just kind of, what are your thoughts on that? Is that, um, do you want, because now, right now, as it sits, you've got an open seat. The board would be looking at filling that seat. Unless you say, you know what, let's, let's go ahead and keep that open.
I think it's a good idea myself. I'm reducing it to seven.
I would agree with that.
I'm not opposed to it. We'll probably vote for it, um, but just thinking, we had to get an act of.
Right.
The House delegates and we needed, um, our rep, I think, somebody, who was it that carried it for us?
I don't know at the time.
Um, it might have been Chris Peace or it might have been. I don't know. So, I mean, somebody had to carry that for us, um, and that was three years ago, two years ago.
It was a little bit more than that, I think.
But not in the far distant.
No, no, it wasn't in the far distant past.
I just, I just wonder about, like, is. Do we? I, I just don't know the optics of, of a public body.
Well, for one, we don't have to go back to the state and say, hey, can you change that? It said up to nine.
Would then we be in our rights to go back to nine if we wanted to independently?
Yes. You can, right now, the only thing in, so the state with the legislation said. We could have up to nine on the E D A and your bylaws say nine. Now they were updated to have nine. Um, but you can update your bylaws, state code stays the same because they're up to. And you can change your bylaws to say we would prefer, uh, be at seven. And if you ever change your mind, you can go back.
Who's the next person to roll off?
I think Kenny and Ms. Williams are all strong. Strong, okay. At the same time.
So what was the original intent of taking it from seven up to one?
It's been told to me that it was about being able to form a lot of subcommittees, kind of work groups. And each one would tackle a different type of subject. Um, but one, I don't think FOIA rules have made that easy. And two, that's just not what has happened. People just don't have the time.
I, I can tell you from like a governance standpoint, seven is the sweet spot. Like the boards or, or, you know, governing bodies, seven is the sweet spot. So is there a motion?
I think there's a motion in a second. You can call it a question.
Um, all a favor? All opposed? Okay, uh, let's see.
As part of that, do you want the bylaws amended and brought back to you for adoption? If you'd have to just do it when the bylaws are brought back to you and amended, then you would make a motion to approve your, your new bylaws. Or you can wait till January when you have to do it anyway.
I, I, that's the decision that I, I, that's.
Since we're reducing through attrition, I think just waiting until January.
Yeah, I just, that's a detail that, yeah. I'm glad so much attention to details. All right, so, um, you have a couple of questions.
Yeah, oh, I had it from the staff, but. See here, uh, he said if you had questions, just see, so. I want to know the E D A or King William County has any resources that can help with this. One of them, one report account.
Well, we met with, um. Sorry, what was his name? Luke, hold, hold, um, yeah, we met with him and asked. Said, we want to be a partner in some kind of way, if it would help you. Is there anything that we can do? What, what can we do for you? And he said, no.
Okay, I didn't know. I haven't talked to him. I have his question.
But yeah, we brought him in, um, separately to have a meeting and chat with him. Love the idea and just anything that we can do.
Theoretically, though, purely hypothetically, we have money in the budget.
Right, you've got grant match fund money in the budget.
I mean, so we, we, we thought of it as grant match money. It could, it could very easily. But it could be very easily be turned into here you go, Luke, here's ten thousand dollars if we wanted to.
I didn't know. I was just asking, that's why I thought of that. And the second question is, why aren't we able to get upon the same accounting? Uh, we have, uh, four doctors office here in the county. Uh, Alet Medical, C V S, King William, B C U, King William and Alet Family. And there are a pile of prescriptions wrote to, you know. Uh, I think we need to look at and talk to C V S because we already have Walgreens and all down in the county over here. And across the river. But do y'all, do the county really know? We have four different doctors office, all over three sixty.
That, could I ask, isn't, didn't the upper matapana open in pharmacy?
That is part of their facility. It's not a.
It's not a public.
Well, it is, it's open to the public, but it's.
They don't care. The ones I got know from the doctors office, my wife keeps working at C V S, they don't have nothing that's there. They're living with their head. And they landed for no expense.
That's been the experience before with the, with the, um, with the previous pharmacies, well, I mean, like.
Yeah, but that while I was bringing up, you know, how many counties have four doctors off? How many counties do we have one doctor?
That should be part of the close session, discussion for the quitus covering duty counting.
Well, I didn't know. I just had questions and he said we have questions asked, so I will do what I will do. I say quick question, that's all I have.
All right, so let's see, um, uh, we have public comment period. Oops, yes.
Gentlemen, I thought I'd let you know that we're going to go home, so why don't you have your public comment period in this room?
Thank you.
Okay, okay. You bringing it back?
No.
Um, all right, so we're, 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 we're. We're making pretty good time. All right, so, close, uh, closed meeting. We need a motion to convene a. Somebody got that thing to read?
I make a motion to convene a closed meeting in accordance with section two point two three seven seven. One, one, A, three of the Code of Virginia for discussion regarding real property used for public purpose, specifically pertaining. The acquisition of real property for a public purpose, because a discussion of, oh, in an open meeting may adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of our board.
It has to be a vote. Mr. Pearson. Ms. Williams, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Robinson, Mr. Brown, Mr. Hardwick, Mr. Holderide. Sherman Rhodes.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Motion to convene close, uh, closed meeting according to section two point two three seven one one, A, three. Of the Code of Virginia to discuss regard real profit. For use for public purposes, specified pertaining to. Uh, real profit for public purpose. Because discussing open meeting may be affected a bargaining position or negotiating. That's what I thought.
Uh, well, I handed it to him because I thought this was supposed to read, is there?
You don't have to read the whole thing, just say.
I move S R one.
Okay, so, uh, we reconvene the open session, uh, circuit isn't closed meeting. We're done, right? Okay, so.
Okay, we're actually closed. Do we need to put in there that much enough?
No, no, we're done, right? Second. All a favor? We're closed, yeah, thank you.